I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its power.
I entertain a motion to declare open meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed may. Motion carries five, nothing. Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there, here to read that. Uh, roll call, Deb, Chance, Tim, Wyatt.
Here.
Myself here, and Dr. Thor is excused. And the reorganization of the Board of Education. President, Vice President, and Secretary. Turn it over to Dr. All.
Hey, every, every January, regardless of if there was an election in the previous November, we have a reorganization of the Board. Obviously, no new Board members to swear in it. And we're just odd numbered here. Odd numbered meeting last November. Uh, so, we, um, reelect new leadership, uh, for the Board. And so, according to Policy 20301, uh, I'll accept nominations for President of the School.
Can I nominate Mike Sausser? Sorry.
Mr. Sausser? Okay, second call for nominations. Hearing none, um, we can dispense with a secret ballot. And all in favor of my Sausser for President, uh, for the 2022 calendar year. Say aye.
Aye.
I propose may.
Mr. Sausser?
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
Take over the rest of me. You know what to do for.
All right, well, we elect the Vice President, so maybe we want to make a nomination for the Vice President. This time.
I'll nominate Tim Jensen.
Can I nominate, why?
You can.
I need another year's experience.
Sure.
Maybe four years.
Okay, so we have two nominations unless you're gonna work here all year. Anybody else want to make a nomination? Okay, I think you got slips in your packet. There are yellow slips to write down your vote. Fold them a pass this way. Who comes down to the last one? Wyatt, you vote three to two. So Wyatt's our, continue to be our Vice President by this vote of three to two. Now we'll vote for Secretary. Entertained nominations for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Tim Rasmussen.
I'll second him.
Anybody else want to make a nomination?
Technically, technically, we don't need a second.
No. No. Any other nominations, if not, there, we don't need to have a vote, so congratulations, Tim. Okay. Election, let's see, Consent Agenda. Okay, this time, we're gonna approve the Consent Agenda. We have to add a number seventeen to the agenda, which is a resignation of Ms. Teaton, who will no longer be teaching for us next year. So I'll add that on as number seventeen. Anything else down? So, we'll look at the minutes, or the, anybody else have anything else on this agenda? Current agenda. We have the last month's minutes. Questions on that, we'll move on to the financial. Looking a little better, Kelly?
Yes, I'm sorry, right over here. Yes, and we also did get a, a check from Pierce County today. Um, general fund, six hundred and nineteen thousand, that's just from Pierce County, so that's a very good sign.
Cool, great, sleeping better now?
Yeah, much.
You didn't have to go to the bank and borrow anything to get by, did you? I mean, you borrowed that.
Last month, four hundred and twenty-two thousand to pay for claims and pay off.
You did borrow that? But we'll pay that off now.
Yeah.
We will prob, I told Dr. All that I'd like to wait until May to make sure that I felt very comfortable, so we're not going back and forth. And I asked if, if, if the building plan can sustain that, and he said yes. So we'd like to make one big payment in May.
Twenty-seven and forty-eight, you wanted? Maybe it was a thirty, that could be like, yeah, like twenty-five percent. I don't, I don't remember the, our tax kind of district too.
Okay, if there's nothing on that, we'll go to the claims. They just say there's no sped on this month.
No, it came the day after I cut the checks.
So I'll sign that check in a couple days.
No, they have to wait till next month. They have to wait till next month.
Oh, they will?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't think they waited for anybody.
They don't work it for.
So, the train repair bills, is it anything serious, or just?
No, mostly labor. One part in labor. Uh, we did get it negotiated down about eleven hundred dollars from the, this is for service back in August.
Oh, okay.
That we're paying for, that we were overbilled on. Their service rep is coming to see me, uh, Wednesday to talk about our next maintenance agreement, which goes up two hundred dollars, uh, compared to previous year, which is somewhat standard. You know, as quickly as over your service agreements go up.
Two hundred dollars annually, or monthly, or?
Annually.
Oh, okay.
So from forty-seven to forty-nine, something like that, hundred.
Okay. But that doesn't beat you anything, other than get somebody to work.
Gets you preventive maintenance.
Yeah.
It's the annual inspection and preventive maintenance.
Is that for work on the elementary?
Yeah.
So, would it be worth talking to him about it, to get a better deal if you got the whole school?
Well, I think we might want to do that after we get this summer's project done. I don't know that we're gonna want three different energy service companies servicing our, our HVACs. Now, uh, Train was our, our, our primary ESCO for the elementary. Rasmussen does a lot of our, uh, preventive maintenance and, and, uh, work on this building. We're gonna have Facility Advocates for this one point six million dollar project. So, that might be something we'll want to talk about in the coming months. Whether we roll that all into one, or leave Train across the street and go to Facility Advocates here, or continue to have three different energy service companies. Seems a little inefficient, I guess, but.
Facility Advocates has their own program too.
Yeah.
I'll look that down in the road then.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything on agenda overall?
No.
All right, I entertain a motion to approve that Consent Agenda, as is, to one, change.
I'll need to accept Consent Agenda if you want, wanna change it.
Your second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed may. Motion carries five, nothing. Okay, now we're gonna have a little demo, a smart board demo.
Uh, you want us to come to your room, there, Mrs. Miller? Let's just go across the hall. Um, and she's gonna demo, we got those fifteen smart boards with our H two money. So just want you to take a look at what your investment went towards.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion items, number ten. Board policy six oh four oh four and six oh four oh five.
Okay, this is, I think maybe part of the reason why it is good to review policies routinely, you can see that it's been, what, you know, six and a half years. We need to do a little work on six oh four oh four. Um, multicultural education, of course, this is, you know, mandated by statute. So, i- it's, it's probably good for us and for Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Hudson to work with staff on the language of this and the Board's plan, uh, for a multicultural education program, uh, to make sure that we're, uh, in compliance with state statute. So, I think it's probably fair to say, and I'll let Mrs. Hudson and Mr. Schmidt speak further if necessary.
Is this policy state statute, I mean?
It is, it's based on.
There's no versions, I mean, you can't change it.
Well, uh, you can change the language as long as you're still meeting state statute. But you can see, there's a little bit of antiquated language in it, maybe, if you look through it. Uh, I don't, I don't know of the UNICAMR, thinking that it needs to have some newer version based on, you know, things that have been going on in society for the past few years or not, but, um, but it's definitely something we, we probably need to give a little more attention to. And, uh, you know, as you read through it too, you might say, well, yeah, I don't know, what are, what is our Board policy on multicultural education, or Board plan, I should say. Well, I, I know that Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Hudson could say, well, yeah, we're pretty, we're familiar enough with the curriculum in our buildings that we're not in violation of any of this, but, um, but it's, it's probably good for us to maybe move it up a little bit on our professional development plan and, and think and talk as a staff and make sure we're comfortable with the language and that we're in compliance. Um, do you guys have anything that you would add on that?
Was it two years ago, we made the change because you were able to get through junior high and high school without having a health class? So that was one of the changes we made to the curriculum, to make sure that we were getting, uh, the health portion of it, the, especially our junior high students dealing with hygiene and development and all that stuff. So that was one of the major changes we made a couple years ago. But that's more of curriculum to make sure we were meeting this, so.
And we've talked a little bit about, um, some of the, uh, changes that are coming with the social, emotional learning and being able to add that component, uh, within our verbiage a little more than what it is. So that's one of the things that we're looking at as well.
Is that covered out by COVID and?
That's part of it.
Home problems, learning problems.
The only question I have is, uh, this is like Hispanic-American, so like, do we like require kids to prove that they're an American citizen to go to school, to public school?
Well, we, we, we do require a birth certificate, you know, and so that's generally gonna be our proof of, um,
That's, I just wanted to.
Yeah. Um, so, yes, we've had, uh, and, and what makes us think more about our multicultural education program as well is, is we've had a significant increase in, uh, Hispanic students and families, uh, over the course of the past year, year and a half or so. Uh, and so we just don't wanna get too far away from making sure that we are, um, you know, in, in compliance and, and, uh, you know, acknowledging, you know, cultural diversity. So, with regard to really to both of these, I don't have any recommendation for language changes, but I can tell you that, uh, we probably ought not turn the page on them and wait until they come back around in five more years, uh, for review. You're, you're aware, of course, the Health Education Standard push at the state level and that they suspended those in September. I don't anticipate that they, really don't anticipate that they'll come back. In fact, the newest Board member, the State Board of Education, uh, is a very strong advocate for the State Board not getting outside of the lanes of just the core content area, math, science, history, social studies. Anything else, stay out of it. There's a financial, uh, literacy mandate that came out of the State Board of Education that is outside of, so there's a bit of a precedent for the State Board of Education taking away that little bit of local control. So, it's something that, uh, you know, the UNICAMR's back in session, uh, so they have a, they, they chirp about it too. That's more of a Board of Education, State Board of Education, but they kind of listen to each other and see what each other are doing, so, um, that's something I will stay on top of for you. But you also receive notifications from NASB, and of course, if you follow the Royal Herald, you know, you can kind of keep up on, uh, those conversations that are going on.
Move on to number eleven, Board Development. Day is eight, six to ninety.
Deals, you know, mostly, as you notice with, uh, it starts out with the Open Meetings Act and how it applies to, you know, you know, all public candidates, but particularly new school boards. Like, talks about, you know, obviously, the communication among Board members outside of the public meeting.
So what is, uh, ruling on things that we talk about and look at as a Board in a meeting being available to the public to look at?
Have to have at least one copy available for a public inspection.
But certainly not everything, like a teacher's resignation, you don't have to have a copy of that available to the general public at the meeting, do you?
Um, it, that would be debatable, I would think, you know, on, on, like, all those details. Anything beyond, uh, you know, the agenda? But financials, obviously, you know, those things, but, um, but, but yes, I mean, there's, uh.
Should we have those here available for people?
Yeah, Kelly always has copies, she provides.
We just have to ask. Anybody else want to make any comments on that? Yeah, a little bit of a refresher. Okay, there's no more comments, we'll move on. Action items, number twelve, discuss and take possible action on the Board of Education Committee assignments. Anybody want on some more committees? Anybody have something they want off of, or want on?
I think that's a good way to start, unless somebody has something that they actually want to get off of, or on something else, or want to swap.
Yeah.
We might just quit and leave the assignments to see.
I think we've had a lot of, a lot of committee meetings in the last year or two, more than I've ever had previous to that, but, uh, I think it's gonna start slowing down again too, hearing another.
Is there a committee that, that needs help, says, um, negotiations? I won't have anything to do for that for this year.
No, I won't be able to have that this year.
So, if there's some, a committee that needs help, I just, I'm willing to, I'll take that.
We would have to drop somebody, though, or else we'd have.
Then don't drop anybody, don't.
Otherwise, you'd have a majority.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's true.
Because we have three on everything.
You're right.
Which, if you want on some, I'll.
No, I'm just offering, since I won't be on that committee this year, that'll be fine.
I guess the only I would say is where I'm on technology, which we haven't had a meeting in technology for I don't know how long, committee meeting, and, I don't know, if there's some committee involved, if a family member, if somebody, oh, I should get off that, and somebody else wanted on, I'd have a problem with that whatsoever.
When does it meet?
Never had a meeting.
I'll take care of it for you this year, if you wanna.
All right.
Do you have to know more than the first phase?
I think.
You don't have to know anything about technology.
Oh, man, I'm okay.
You just have to listen to them explaining to you and whether you think it's, we need it or not.
I'm here for you.
We will make them do a demo or anything like that.
Well, Wyatt's had me use the smart board today, I'm like, oh, six. Where's the old projector?
Where's the old? Okay, anybody else, have any comments or standing that will change?
Okay, I got that.
Always willing to just make that one change.
Yep.
Okay, I'll have to have a vote on that, a motion.
I'll make a motion to remove Sausser from technology and add Jensen to it.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, that's the first and seconded. Deb? Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries five, zero. Thirteen, discuss and take possible action on appointing Dr. Darren Harald as the District's Non-Discrimination Compliance Coordinator as per Policy two oh three point oh one, Board Organization will be.
Annual formality and requirement.
I'll make a motion to approve the refund of Dr. All the State Federal Programs Director.
Second? Okay, it's my first and seconded. Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Fourteen, we don't have to, there's no revisions.
They, these are the policies created from the last.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Discuss and take possible action on revisions of Board Policy six oh four oh one and six oh four oh two.
You should have the, the new language highlighted, old language stricken. Uh, Mr. Schmidt and, uh, Mrs. Hudson, uh, went through these, and so the, the information that is on, that you see on, in your board packet is now accurate.
If there's any questions on that, make a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the revision of policies, six oh four dot oh one and six oh four dot oh two, as read.
Second?
Second that.
Okay, it's been first and seconded. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries five, two.
Oh, I got one question. Do we gotta put these in our deal then, or do we need like a copy?
I'll give you a fresh copy. I probably could have tonight.
Fifteen, discuss and take possible action on contract renewal and terms for Mrs. Jen Hudson for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
We've done this at different times over the past. We've offered a contract one month, and then you've approved terms the next. I don't believe that you have Mrs. Hudson or Mr. Schmidt's, I, you know, and we had talked about it. And I, I suggested that maybe it's best to wait till next month for terms of their contract, so they have time to, for sure, you know, communicate to them, and then get to you in your packet next month, so you have, uh, the weekend prior to the Monday meeting to consider, uh, their request, and then you can vote on that in February. So this would just be to offer a contract for the next school year.
Saves some time.
I'll make a motion to approve a contract for Mrs. Hudson for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
Second that. It's been first and seconded, myself, yes, Deb?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries five, zero. Okay, number sixteen, discuss and take possible action on contract renewal on terms for Mr. Kyle Schmidt for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
I'll make the motion that we approve a contract for Mr. Schmidt for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'll second that.
First and seconded, Chance?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Motion carries five, nothing. Okay, number seventeen. Accept the resignation of, uh, Mrs. Haley Teaton for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mrs. Teaton for.
Is it Teaton that?
Yes.
All right?
Yep, yep, that's right.
Mrs. Teaton for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
Effective end of this school year.
Effective end of two thousand and twenty-two contract.
I'll second that. Deb?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Tim? Yes.
Wyatt?
Yep.
Myself, yes, motion carries. Found the reports already, Activity Directors reported.
Uh, scoreboards are up, you've saw those. There is an app that you can download that actually keeps a live update from everything that we host this runoff of it, so even if you are not here, you get live updates. So as soon as something is put into the scoreboard, it shows up on your phone. So if you're not here, you can keep up on stuff, if you're watching it live on TV, or if you're wanting to keep up on it while you're out eating whatever it is, you can do that, so. It's been pretty good so far, good, I, I've enjoyed it, so, we'll see how the rest of it goes. Uh, holiday tournament, our basketball team did well, boys were champions, girls were runner-up. Um, junior high basketball got started, wrestling's well underway, bowling team is twelve and four. Um, we are hosting District Bowling this year in Norfolk. Um, so we will be the host school, and then we'll do that at Kings Lanes. So that'll be February first, um, that, that'll be going on, so. And then from there, you have the schedule for January and the beginning of February, and it's gonna be a wild next three weeks, so it's pretty busy the rest of the way.
Um, I don't really have anything specific that I need to address within the information that I gave you besides number six, um, the children's all-state choir presentation. Um, they want to be able to show you when they sang, and it's on DVD, and we just have not received it yet, so that, that should be able to happen next month.
How many kids were involved in that?
What kids?
How many?
Four, four fifth grade girls.
Work-based learning stuff, I was gonna update you on that. We have everybody but, I believe, two, I have three at the place, and we have two meetings this week. But Jocelyn Anderson's going to Sunrise Hill Veterinary, uh, Scout Ashburn and Brayden Waldau are going to Nightcom, Jess Kabus going to Michael's Foods, Trevor Doris at Wilbur Ellis, Morgan Gobera went to Norfolk Fire and Rescue. Uh, Brittany, Emma, and Aiden Peterson are at CHI. Uh, Heather Penderdias will be at Frontier Insurance, and Michaela Schoenberger's gonna be at Customs Sports, uh, doing graphic design, so we've had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine meetings so far. We got two more this week. And then, uh, Will Gunning's gotta finish some paperwork with Faith Regional to be an athletic trainer, that's what we're trying to get him in. Uh, Derek back here's trying to get ahold of the flight instructor out of Norfolk, uh, trying to get him into some pilot roles. And then, Peeps, we have a couple things lined up with some insurance, but we gotta get them finalized yet, so. That's where we're at with that, and that again, for the, all the kids that we've had meetings with starts this Friday. Um, School Improvement, MTSS Team, we're gonna meet it with Wahoo here on one of our Professional Development Days. It's actually February second, I believe it's the Wednesday. Uh, so Jen and I'll take a group of teachers down there, how they implemented it. They're five years in already, so it's fully implemented and running. Basically, how they go about it, how it's structured, how they run it, and just kind of give us a rundown of everything that they did, just so we kind of have a background of it, uh, before we get too much farther into it and how to best implement it. Uh, February tenth, parent-teacher conferences, so that'll happen before we have our next meeting. Um, so just giving you a heads up there, and then, uh, winter map testing results, we're done with all that. We set a goal when we redid our, um, school mission and vision, and we set goals for each year. And for this first year, we wanted sixty percent, um, approval rate by students, meaning that sixty percent of our students will improve in the area of reading and language. Uh, and at the winter here, we hit fifty-two percent. Um, so we got a little bit farther to go to get to that goal here at the end of the year. Um, so that's where we're sitting at. Uh, average growth in math and science was almost three points, and typically it's two points from fall to winter. And then reading and language, we were right around the one and a half to two. So right, right in where the growth should be, but, um, as you can see, we got a little bit of room to grow, but that's what every school does, so that's what we're working on, that's why we put our goal there, so, that's it.
Thank you, guys. If you have any question? Okay. Dexter's present report. I don't have anything. Don't feel like expecting to have to get a little...
I keep looking for you.
So who wants to present their report, and we'll get out of here.
Okay, just updating you on our S R two and S R three funds that are still out there, the funds that we've requested and received, and what we still have left in the bank and what those funds have been allocated for and when we'll request them. So I would say probably, hopefully by midsummer, certainly the start of next school year, we likely will have received all of our S R funds. And that will be a nice thing, just in item number, whatever, item number thirteen, where you appointed me as compliance coordinator and special reporter, that's what S R was, and it will be nice to put that to bed. Been great having that free money, once-in-a-lifetime investment, but it's been a bit of a pain from time to time working with the feds, but that's okay. We'll do it, obviously, you know, for those funds to invest. I have your copy of new COVID guidelines that I've given you. We've got a little bit going on. We've got one teacher out right now, is that right? Do we have any students either required isolated, required masked, not required, but expected to? So we've kind of taken on a case-by-case basis. Again, these are just guidelines, okay? There are no mandates. But Jen and I did talk, you know, depending upon, if we have a staff member, depending upon who they serve and when, when their symptoms began, teachers, when they're non-symptomatic, they can come back immediately as soon as they're non-symptomatic and they have to mask. So the whole ten days, fourteen days, isolations and quarantine, that's old, old language. But depending upon who they are, who they meet with and when, it's possible that we would potentially ask a class of kids to mask for a short period of time so we can have that teacher come back, you know, as soon as they feel that they are symptom-free. So I mean, it still is part of, it still is, exists, but I guess I would say that we won't be in a hurry to do that. We'll take everything on a case-by-case basis and communicate with you on that. But right now we do have one teacher who notified Mrs. Hodgson over the weekend and she was COVID positive, and Jen immediately had that conversation with her about when her symptoms began and what students she had served, you know, during that time. And so I'm not sure if there were any that you felt you needed to contact.
Actually, all of the students that she would have saw Friday received a courtesy email.
But not an expectation that they mask when they come to school and that, so. So again, it's probably unlikely, but it's still there. We do use this, I mean, we do appreciate, you know, guidance from our health department, but it's not something we think about. We can go days and days really without thinking about, you know, COVID and how it's affecting our teaching and learning and our normal process and routines at school.
Really, what symptoms do you call symptomatic? Because it takes on the symptoms of some of the other circumstances that we've had in the past. And how do you know whether it's COVID or whether it's just a...
Yeah, that's just, I mean, I think we say, you know, how do you feel? I feel fine. Okay. Then you're non-symptomatic, you're asymptomatic if you feel fine. Because, yeah, everything's been convoluted so much. It's hard to ask somebody to, okay, we're going to leave it up to you, you know, you're putting us in danger. You know, I mean, it's just, I think we're way past that sensation of, you know, putting people at risk. And that's the sense I get in the culture of our community, in the culture of our school. So we are currently advertising for math teacher, science teacher, and vocal music teacher. We have apps for all three of those in, probably in the next week or so. Administrative team will get a little more serious about who we want to invite in maybe for interviews. So by February, we hopefully will have one or two or three recommendations for contracts for teachers. Possibly, certainly no guarantee. We don't have a lot of apps, but we'd have at least one app for each of those positions. And there's your, in summary, I did do a little bit of figuring on general fund revenues for the past five years. Last fiscal year was a five-year low for general fund revenues. So, yes, as I mentioned to you, you know, last month or month before, you know, we've maintained a pretty static general fund levy over the course of the past several years while personnel experience has risen, you know, upwards of ten-plus percent over the course of the past six years. And so we really have shrunk the surplus funds in the bank account. So I think it's, we're trying to live according to our means now, a little bit more maybe so. So what we ask for our stakeholders through our levying authority is it's not so much what we need to spend, and it had been, I think, for a lot of years. And so we did generate quite a nice balance of funds, and now we're running quite a bit thinner, quite a bit leaner, I guess, would be a way to say it. But that's offset that, obviously, with some building fund investments over the course of the past five years as well. But we'll continue to run on a monthly basis, probably as Kelly is going to let us, you know, know, okay, things are, you know, a little tighter, and that's just fine. I've visited with staff about that too. Now would probably not be the time for staff members to ask for something that hasn't been budgeted for. And, you know, they're fine, they're spectacular, you know, with that, so. There, no meetings out of district in the last month, and there are my vacations at sick balance.
All right, Dr. Arnold. Anybody else have anything? I've been up. Not, we are adjourned.